Meeting will come to order, please. Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Planning Board to address three requests by Middletown Center LLC pertaining to the West Main Cottington Development Project. The Planning Board has already held two special meetings on this matter, on February 5th and April 3rd of this year. At the meeting on February 5th, a public hearing was opened, and that public hearing was closed at the April 3rd meeting. Technically, that public hearing pertained only to the first request on the agenda. However, at both of these meetings, the Planning Board took public input on all three requests, and all persons who wanted to speak were allowed to speak. Accordingly, there will be no further public input this evening. That said, the Planning Board's responsibility this evening is not to make decisions on these requests, but rather to make recommendations to the Town Council, who will make the ultimate decisions. And they will hold a public hearing before they make these decisions. This evening, after a brief opening comments from Gerard Galvin, attorney for the applicant, the Planning Board will discuss all three questions, and then vote on each of the three separately. All votes this evening will be made by a show of hands. Without any comments that Planning Board members have before we start proceedings? Mr. Galvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board, Gerard Galvin from Galvin Law, on behalf of the applicant. As stated, this is now our third meeting on our request for positive recommendations to be forwarded to the council. In those first two meetings, we certainly learned about the passion of members of the public who appeared to speak. I also think that the Board and the developer have had a meaningful discussion about modifications to the overlay that we can agree on and some that we can't. The public hearing closed last meeting, but since that time, we have provided the Planning Board with one further revision, in which we made the effort to address several specific questions and issues that arose at the April 3rd meeting. Following that meeting, the planner, Mr. Wolanski, submitted a list to you outlining the several requests or issues that were identified by the Planning Board. We then went to work and to discuss and implement the changes that we felt we could, and still maintain the integrity of the project called for in the development agreement. We submitted that revision to the town, and Mr. Wolanski made a second list, which was provided to you, identifying the areas in which we did address your concerns and a few remaining ones that were not addressed. So I'll briefly summarize, not each individual change, but as a group, those that we were able to make. First, a subject that has been discussed in both prior meetings, we have agreed to, and we've submitted maps to reflect, the underlying zone change and the comp plan change be made to limited business for the zone change and limited and office business for the comp plan, and that that be limited to what is referred to as the leased areas, so that the municipal portion of this development will remain zoned as public. So that was the first revision that I felt of note to mention tonight. And this is how we will proceed with this project. When it advances to the council and has to be advertised, we'll be doing, we'll be moving forward in this vein. Second, we made the effort to try to incorporate some of the historic references in the comprehensive plan and add some references to highlight the importance of this project serving as a gateway to Middletown. We then worked through the individual uses, whether they be identified as prohibited uses or permitted by right uses or special use permit uses, and we tried to make changes where we could responsive to the Planning Board. We did that in many instances. There were a handful of uses where we did not make that change, and we retained certain uses by right for reasons I'll discuss in a moment. We made the change to the affordable housing number, that percentage being moved from 10% to 12%, which will now generate 18 units. There were some additional areas, such as lighting and signage, that the Board asked us to address. Lighting, we are still looking at whether we can default to the general provisions in the code. We may be able to do that. I think we need to review a little bit further before we can commit to that. On the signage, you know, I drove up West Main today, and on the east side of West Main Road, there are about 15 or 20 pole signs as you move up West Main Road directly across the street from the parcels we're discussing. It's not uniform, it does not look good, and we know you were looking to reduce the scope of what we had asked for. But what we're proposing is for two larger signs, one on the corner of West Main and Cottington, one at the main entrance, which are larger than what the current code calls for, but they're going to be part of a coordinated plan, and there's going to be two of them to deal with a very, very large development. And we think that ultimately, that's the appropriate amount of signage to cover that amount of space in the development. So that's one area where we're unwilling to or unable to move from our request. And so I just wanted to reiterate in closing again why we're requesting this overlay, and why the development agreement with the town contemplates this overlay. The town submitted the RFI and selected our proposal for this very important and significant project. It's a very expensive project for which financing will be required, and to achieve this, risk has to be minimized where possible. And this is why certain uses, which are critical to the financial viability of the project, must be included as by right uses. Planning Board member Perrick spoke to this briefly at the last meeting. Since we met last even three weeks ago, the financial world has been in somewhat of a tumult, and the project and financing a project like this requires a degree of certainty on entitlements. My clients are prepared to invest a significant amount of money for this project, but they can only do so if the uses agreed to in the development agreement are allowed by right. The council fully understood this, the staff we negotiated with fully understood this, and this is why the development agreement calls for the hotel and certain retail uses to be allowed by right. So in closing, I'd just like to reiterate, we're asking for your recommendation that the comp plan, future land use map be amended to change the leased area from institutional to limited and office business. Your recommendation to the council to accept our proposal to change the underlying zoning of the leased area from public to limited business traffic sensitive, and your recommendation that the West Main Cottington zoning overlay be passed, and that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purposes and the intent of zoning. So that is what I had to discuss with you tonight, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them, of course.
Does any Planning Board member have questions for Mr. Galvin before we start our discussions? Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Go ahead, Steve. No, this is questions that you have for Mr. Galvin based on his opening comments. Then we're going to get into discussion on the questions. Save your comments, okay? Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Okay, with that, we will address the three questions on the agenda. The table is open for Planning Board member comments. Comments? Mr. Fenton?
In looking at the new map here, I see the public space with the boomerang attached to it, and also, there's a lease, an additional lease area that's incorporated as well. Let's see. I guess that, yeah. My question comes down to the border there on that leased space, you know, where that dimensionally where that's going to be located, because some of these lots that we're discussing overlap that public space. It seems like there's some, part of the project is going to overlap into that lot right now that incorporates the public space. Are we going to redefine that, the borders of that lot there? I guess that's a question.
Well, if that's a question for me, Mr. Fenton, could I just ask you to clarify? The map is up on the screen, so I'm, there's a, there's a parcel that includes the boomerang, which says to remain PA, public. That is, the more highlighted yellow area is part of the overlay, okay? But that will be, remain the municipal parcel of the overlay. The additional highlighted, but lesser highlighted portion to the west of that is land that's outside of the overlay but is under town control, and that will be part of the town's ability to utilize that space.
Okay, but I guess when we're looking at the lots on the discussion, you know, the part that contains the public space, you know, it looks like that one lot shares the public space and part of the project as well.
The underlying lot? Yes, so there is going to be, there will need to be, as we proceed through this process, a very clear meets and bounds description of the sublot, the sublease lots, which will overlay over the existing lots, okay? And that's where the line will be drawn between LB, LBA and P.
Okay, okay. I guess that's my question.
All set?
Yep.
Other comments? Mr. Hudler.
I'm going to have some questions for you, Mr. Galvin. So, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Galvin and your clients, for the accommodations that have been agreed to, which are appreciated, but let me say, I believe there is a lot more work we need to do to make this project conform to the comprehensive land use plan and to make this project the very special project that Middletown citizens are expecting it to be. And so I'm going to ask that you and your clients continue to be patient as we work through them. It's going to take a little bit of time, but we're making decisions tonight that are going to impact the town of Middletown in a significant way for decades to come. So, let's get to it. I want to ask questions regarding the proposed overlay zone, and by the way, for citizens who are in the audience who want to follow some of the topics I'm going to ask about, copies are available in the back, or at least they were, they may have run out, but you'll have a better sense of the issue if you have it. So, Mr. Galvin, let's start on page two. And my first question is really in the nature of a clarification, rather than a substantive point, but an important one, I think, which is this. In D, or what was D, we identify the goals of this plan and say the public benefits are included, as referenced in the supporting legal agreements between the town and the development entity, and then you all inserted at our suggestion, including but not limited to, the creation of family and pedestrian-friendly spaces and community usage, and thank you for that. That's fundamental to what we're talking about. But now that we have divided the property into the leased land and the open parcel space, I want to be clear that the creation of family and pedestrian-friendly spaces and community uses is on both components of the property, that the leased land that your clients will be developing will have this character, as opposed to looking to the open space to provide all of those features. And so the clarification I would like to see would be to say, including but not limited to, the creation of family and pedestrian-friendly spaces and community uses within both the leased land defined below, as well as the open space parcel defined below.
Well, I think that that is achievable, and I think we have provided for pedestrian-friendly and community usage spaces in the concept that we put before you. The hesitation I have is the extent to which that opens doors to a degree of more than this project will allow for, to have a viable project, and that's the concern I have about leaving it that open-ended. I'm okay, we are already providing for this, and so I think we can include it, but I'm concerned about how we measure that.
Right, so, of course, I have the opposite concern, that if it's not in there, the developer has the right, as of right, to do things, and if it's not calling for this town commons kind of character, then there's no need for it. I think, the language I have proposed doesn't impact the quantity, I think we'll be talking about that later.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, and I certainly, and just as a way of dealing with this, we understand that tonight, you might be making recommendations, and some of your recommendations might include language that on the spot tonight, I'm not prepared to accede to, but that will be part of your recommendation, and that's acceptable, and we'll then work to achieve what we can with it.
Good, and I'm hopeful that, I know that all of the issues that I'm going to raise and my colleagues will raise, will, I know that all of them won't be acceptable to your clients, but hopefully, many of them will be, and those, we can for sure incorporate, and we can make recommendations based on what isn't agreed to. Okay. So, then let's get into the heart of it, on page three. And again, this one is a little bit legalistic, but in, under permitted uses in A, you say a mixture of land uses is required, permitted uses are those listed below, and specified as permitted uses in 602 of this chapter. I think that's an error to say "and" as permitted in 602, because the next several pages lay out exactly the uses that are permitted. 602 is, of course, the general use table under Town Ordinance for limited business, and there are a number of limited business uses in 602 that are completely unacceptable for this project, such as auto repair shops, garages, dry cleaners, dry cleaning plants, repair shops, outdoor storage, and the like. So I think that the uses that are to be permitted need to be laid out in this document without saying, and also everything in 602.
Steve, hold on, Solicitor has a comment.
Mr. Hudler, that language says, and specified as permitted uses in section 602 of this chapter for the Middletown Center overlay district. So this overlay, part of this overlay ordinance would be a new column in section 602 that would lay out all of the uses that are permitted by right, permitted by special use permit, or prohibited in the overlay district. So that reference is to that section of 602, not the limited business section of 602.
Okay.
And I think, I'm assuming Mr. Galvin agrees with that.
I think that's correct, but I also think that the next line, which we had added previously to try to address the uses allowed in the public area, is now extraneous, because we've proposed retaining the public designation, underlying zoning. So instead of striking the line you referenced, Mr. Hudler, perhaps we could strike the next line?
Yeah, I agree that that's extraneous at this point, now that the public zoning designation's going to be maintained.
And with Mr. Regan's clarification, that the spreadsheet in 602 will add a column for Middletown Center overlay that will simply include those that we agreed to, or that the Town Council agrees based on our recommendation, that's fine.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't open up the overlay district to uses that would be permitted by right in the other columns in 602.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, just a point of clarification there. The Planning Department did provide a draft table with that column, but there is, there is not, in every single use in the use table, there is not a designation for the proposed Middletown Center column. So, just to be clear, for the, for the items that do not have a designation in the column under the Middletown Center, the permitted, the permitted use designation will fall under the limited business designation. Is that correct? It will be the default? Unless it's explicitly specified in the column designated to this development?
I think that's how the newly created column will be created, and I want to draw a line, and Ron might speak to this, but that document that you have is not, I don't think, the effort to create the new column for 602. It was just meant to sort of show you limited business, what limited business allows compared to what the overlay would allow. If this passes, in whatever form it passes, a new column in 602 will be created that addresses the uses in that, in this overlay. Is that fair?
Right, that's correct. So where there are those blanks within the table that was provided by the Planning Department, those uses were basically not referenced in the overlay district, so the overlay was silent on those uses, so that's why it was left blank. So, our understanding in the Planning Department was that the limitations or the allowances in the limited business district would then apply if it's silent in the overlay district.
Which is why I raised the question I raised.
Is that the intent, or is it, is it the intent that the specific uses that are listed in the overlay, the narrative overlay, as permitted by right, special use permit, or prohibited, that those are the uses that will be in that column in 602? And anything else that's not in here would be prohibited?
Paige, do you want to address this? I mean, are we intending to have the fallback?
Please identify yourself.
Paige Brock. My understanding is the narrative in this overlay with the listing of uses would be the uses that are allowed either by right or by special use permit.
Thank you, sir. And then I think, back to my original point, Mr. Galvin, we can take out the and specified as permitted uses in 602 of this chapter for the Middletown Center overlay, because that creates the ambiguity. Okay, page four. Under retail commercial, the first bullet, general merchandise, retailing activities, we talked about this at the April 3 meeting, and I, and we agreed, you all agreed and have implemented deleting department stores under 30,000 feet, but I believe that we also agreed that the shops permitted under general merchandise retailing activities would not exceed 15,000 feet. So it's basically, we're talking about small boutiquey stores in our town commons.
Yes, I'm sorry, if we had agreed to that and I missed that limitation, I apologize. It seems that we can agree to that.
Thank you. Thank you. And by the same token, I think we agreed to delete small-scale shopping center.
I just don't recall whether we, well, yeah, if it's defined, you know, we'll have to look back at the definition of that to see whether we can commit to that.
Right. The point being that this is going to have the look and feel and flavor and character of a town commons with smaller shops and not going to be just another shopping center. So, okay. Okay. Page five. I'm going to come back to the bank, so let's not talk about the bank now, but the hospital medical center or clinic, under governmental, educational, institutional, I believe that was an S for special use permit and got changed to a Y, and it seems to me that's more appropriately a use by special use permit only.
When you say it was an S and it was When you say it was an S and it was changed to a Y, I think this is the first version of this that has introduced Ss or Ys.
I guess what I mean is, we talked about it as a special use at our April III meeting.
Okay. I don't, I don't recall that. I know that certain, you know, as, as we're experiencing in Middletown now, there's healthcare that exists in sort of two, I think, of the shopping strip, shopping centers, one on West Main, one on East Main. It is becoming more of a retail operation. We do want to preserve that use as allowed by right. I think it might be addressed in one other area as well in here, but I, I want to be very careful before agreeing to reduce that to a special use permit.
Okay. Okay, and then under accessory uses, we talked about the cellular antenna, and there's a confusing addition that has been put in here, that says, second bullet, cellular and other antenna on top of structures with a height limit of eight feet or shielded from view from a public right of way. We talked at the meeting about a six-foot antenna. This says it can be eight feet unless it's shielded from view, that's what the "or" is. I wondered if you meant the "or" to be an "and"?
Yes.
Okay, that fixes that. And then the next bullet, locating cellular or other antennas six feet in height or more on top of structures and visible from a public right of way. Did you mean or less?
Yes, let's go with less there, Mr. Hartler.
It's a big difference. Okay, and the last one on that page.
Huh? Excuse me for a minute.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah. Go ahead and ask.
Okay, so Mr. Hartler, quick clarification on that. What, what we are looking for is an antenna six feet or less to be allowed by right.
Clarification?
Even if it's not shielded.
Yeah, Mike has a point of clarification.
Well, so, how many antennas do you, you know, do you anticipate would be, would be on top of a building?
I really, I actually really don't think there's going to be many. I don't think it's going to be a main focal point of, and so I, I don't want this to become a huge side discussion here, because I think there, there is the need for it, probably one on the hotel, perhaps one on the bank. I don't think there's going to be a need for, you know, you're not going to see these things up and down the buildings for, on the apartments or the retail, but they're going to be, it's going to be needed. So we're looking for some right to do that, six feet or less.
Is there possible shared uses for those antennas? You know, say, if there's an antenna up there, is it possible for more than one person to use it? You know, if that allows for, if the technology allows for it?
You'll have to forgive me. I don't have a lot of background with it. My understanding is it's sort of in the vein of a satellite dish on a house.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, thanks.
Gerard, so are you saying that the provision for height limit of eight feet and shielded would come out, or is that, or those both still stay in?
I guess it can come out, yeah. We're, if, if we can achieve the, you know, six feet or less by right.
Before you remove that, I, I thought at the last meeting, we, you agreed to have one antenna on the hotel within the roof space so that it was shielded. I thought that was, that is what was agreed to.
Well, I think that was one of the areas where there's a need for an antenna to deal with the customers' needs in that hotel. I think the bank might also need one, but look, we're, again, we don't have the full project here. We're trying to create the framework in, in the ordinance for, under what conditions this might be allowed, so.
Could I suggest that we, that you stick with what you agreed to, and let's put any additional antenna as a special use permit?
Well, I think we'll have to go back and see what we agreed to before I agreed to how you're representing that tonight. I, I say that respectfully, I just don't recall that specific agreement. We were working off of, we, we came out of the meeting working on.
Let me, let me say this. If you confirm
Yes.
That you agreed to a six-foot antenna shielded in the hotel space under the roof, and nothing else, then any other antenna should be allowed by special permit.
Well, we're, we're, tonight, we're, we're looking for a six-foot or less by right, and I think we have to proceed that way tonight, if, and we understand you're, you're going to be making recommendations to the council that may or may not include that recommendation. And in the meantime, we will continue to review exactly what we need, and perhaps that can be amended at.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to allow the six-foot antenna by right if it's shielded.
I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, again, this, this is, this is difficult for a lot of reasons, this entire project. One of them is we have, we have three different principles here, and so when this issue's coming up, there are, there are a couple of different pieces of input that I need to get from the client, and it's hard to do it on the fly. Now, I'm sorry if we missed one of, something you said we agreed to in our revision, and I'm certainly open to going back and looking at that, but what I'm hearing from my clients tonight as we address it, is that what we're looking for is the six-foot or less by right. All right, shielded by right, are you okay?
Yes.
Without the limitation on the number?
No!
Because this is.
No!
As long as they're, as long as they're all shielded, I'm okay with it.
I think we can agree to that.
Okay. So, could the wording there be modified so that the height is limited to six feet and all antennas are shielded?
Yes.
Okay, did you have another clarification, or that did it?
That's by right, just to confirm.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Galvin, one more on page five. The last bullet provides for fitness center and court games accessory to the hotel or residential uses. I'm very concerned about court games because of the issues associated with pickleball courts, and I wonder if that was intentionally, if, if that was thought, thought through, because your, your client will be getting complaints in the middle of the night from residents of the landing and so on, if there was a pickleball court, court there.
Well, I can, Mr. Karam, I think would like to speak to this, but I can tell you our intention here, yeah, maybe not. Okay, I understand, you, no, Jim, you can't. Our intention here is, as you may experience when you visit a hotel, or if you see an apartment complex, that there is opportunities and then provision for, whether it's a basketball court, or, and, and one of these might even be inside the hotel facility. We don't know specifically how that's going to look, and I don't know if, if there's a particular concern about pickleball, perhaps we can deal with that. But because on the next page, something that we accepted, you know, there's a commercial outdoor recreation prohibition, we felt the need to carve out that sort of accessory allowance in the accessory uses to the hotel and the apartment.
Mr. Chair, my suggestion might be, if, if Mr. Hartler's concern is about pickleball and the noise associated with outdoor pickleball courts, that language be added saying that, that excluding pickleball courts.
Okay, I'm happy with that, if you are, Mr. Galvin.
That's fine, yes.
Fitness center and court games perent excluding pickleball courts. Okay. Okay, page six. So this one, I am confident that you are not going to be happy with, Mr. Galvin, but drive-through service for restaurants and retail including banks, I think is entirely inconsistent with the concept of a pedestrian-friendly, walkable, town commons type project. Almost by definition, drive-throughs do not work, so I want, you can share your thoughts now or later, but, and I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I, I am not inclined to support any drive-throughs in this project.
Well, I, I understand your position, and I think that the, the town center concept and being pedestrian-friendly and having outdoor opportunities on this 15 acre plus parcel is going to have to live together with some of these commercial facets of the development, and this has always been part of the proposal, and, and it is part of, it is simply a requirement. There's, this is not going forward without the drive-throughs.
Please, order, order please. Order please, thank you.
So I, I anticipated the position your clients would have, and they will do what they're going to do, but we are going to do what we have to do
Understood.
To protect the town. Okay. A, and then I want to get to another very important area regarding land use, which is on page seven, where it starts with mix of land uses. And this is a little bit confusing to read. There's a paragraph that's, it's called common area municipal use and open space, and the beginning part of it talks about the common area, I think within the leased space, and then the subsequent language in red at the bottom deals with the open space parcel. And can you confirm if that is correct?
No, the, it's not in the sense that the original portion of this in black was not intended to be limited to the leased area. Excuse me. That was the description of the, the common area municipal use and open space to begin with. And at the first meeting, it was, I think, a member, Amaranth, who really wanted to kind of focus in and better define the amount of space in the public parcel, the municipal parcel, and that led to the addition of what you see in red. So it, these, these uses are descriptions of possible uses in the open space area throughout all of it, but certainly including the municipal parcel.
So it applies to all 15 and a half acres, that's what you're saying?
Yes, and within it is the specific carve-out of the 1.5 that will remain a contiguous public and open space parcel.
So I would like to definitely have this clarified, for the very reason I said at the, in my first clarification comment, that I want to be clear that the developed parcel, the leased land, quote unquote, contains some of these uses that are part, that give it the character of a town commons, and that would make it a gathering place for people and have some passive areas and gardens and landscaping and fountains and the like. That would not be just in the Middletown open space parcel, but in the 13 and a half acres that your clients are developing as well. This is not just another mixed-use project, this is a special project, and it has to have some of this flavor that I'm talking about. And that's, that's why I think. So if it says, a public common area shall be provided as part of the leased land, and then we deal with the contiguous 1.5 acres later, that makes sense to me, to say the leased land is going to have sitting areas, fountains, gardens, art, and so on, because it, it will need to if it's going to be worthy of being called Middletown Center.
Well, we'll, we'll have to discuss that. I understand that, you know, we talked about this at the outset, there is certainly the provision for that type of space within the leased land. However, as this is drafted, it talks about a minimum percentage. That minimum percentage is meant to deal with the entire overlay district, inclusive of the contiguous portion. So I want to be very careful that, you know, we're not overcommitting to what we can achieve. There, there is absolutely going to be elements of public usage, you know, the bike paths, other elements within the, the leased area, but that is not what, how this is drafted. I mean, it's, it is required, but it's looking at the total amount over the whole district, not just in the leased area or the.
So let me say, this is not how Mr. Walansky understood it, or I understood it. As we understood it, you could base it, the way you're saying it, you could delete from a public common area shall be provided, all the way down to there shall be one contiguous public common area, because it doesn't do anything with your interpretation.
Well, I, I, when you say it doesn't do anything, you're saying it doesn't do anything to require this throughout the full project?
No, it's, it's ambiguous and inconsistent, possibly with the 1.5, with the subsequent language, and it certainly doesn't do anything to impose these community-like features in the leased land. There's nothing that does, other than this, if it's, if it's drafted that way.
Mr. Galvin, could I suggest, and Mr. Hartler, could I suggest that that opening section that begins a public common area shall be.
I mean, it's, it is required, but it's looking at the total amount over the whole district, not just in the leased area or the...
So let me say, this is not how Mr. Walansky understood it or I understood it. As we understood it, you could base it, the way you're saying it, you could delete from "a public common area shall be provided" all the way down to "there shall be one contiguous public common area," because it doesn't do anything with your interpretation.
Well, I, I, what, when you say it doesn't do anything, you're saying it doesn't do anything to require this throughout the full project?
No, it's, it's ambiguous and inconsistent, possibly with the 1.5, with the subsequent language, and it certainly doesn't do anything to impose these community-like features in the leased land. There's nothing that does, other than this, if it's, if it's drafted that way.
Mr. Galvin, could I suggest, and Mr. Hutler, could I suggest that that opening section that begins "a public common area shall be provided" all the way down to "there shall be one contiguous area," could that be rewritten to apply to the leased area? I think that would, that is what Mr. Hutler is driving at, so could that section be rewritten to apply to the leased area?
Well, we can, we can absolutely continue to work on that, and as we will with all of this, everything we're discussing. What I'm, what I'm really hoping, though, I want to understand where, we can address all of these things following your, your vote tonight as it goes to the council. Is that how you're envisioning this happening? Because I, I'm concerned about another, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of where this is going, Mr. Hutler. Are you gonna ask for another continuance for another version of this?
No, that's, no, it's, it, I'm gonna let the chairman answer.
I, I suspect we will vote to put changes or conditions on whatever we approve. Those changes and conditions will go to the Town Council. When it comes before the Town Council, you can present any changes you wish to propose. That's how I see it happening.
Then, then I can, then I can guarantee you, we are gonna look at, as we have after every communication we have had with the planning board or the staff, if there is a critique or an area of concern that, that, that we're hearing, we are going to do our best to implement and refine and try to provide the best document that we can while still preserving what we need to preserve to proceed with the project. I can assure you that.
That's all we can ask.
I appreciate that.
Steve, hold on, Mr. Amaranth has a clarification.
So, just so I understand this section and the way you're presenting it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that 10% of the 15-acre parcel shall be committed to open space, public space, but that 10% can, can include the 1 and 1/2 acres that's designated as, that's going, that's going to be designated as open space as not part of the leased land? So, just so I understand, because I think maybe I'm, I got this wrong. If that's the case, then the leased part of land, according to that understanding, can have 0% open space. I'm sorry, public space. That's, that's how it's been presented, that's how I understand it's been presented.
I understand the point, and we, we can go back and either refine the number or redraft it to make sure that it is required that certain of these opportunities are provided within the leased area, as they are, as they have been reflected to you to date, and perhaps more than that. I mean, they're, the bike pa, and these are areas where I think also, should the overlay pass, my expectation is, is that the work will begin on a master plan application. As part of that, there will also be communication with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and part of that discussion is going to be, as the maps are beginning to take shape, how do we make this all work? How do we, how do we fit everything in where? And that's where I think it'll be better brought to life, and, and that's the product you'll see. So there's certainly, there will be some in the leased area, we'll be making an effort to address this, I think, between here and when we talk to the council, and then that, and then if it passes, then the work really begins on a master plan where there's communication with the Citizens Advisory and, and everything else to make this cohesive and make it work.
Town Solicitor.
So, yeah, and I agree that the, that provision needs to be reviewed and, and probably revised between the hearings tonight and any hearings that take place in front of the Town Council. I would note that when that, as that provision continues on page eight, this is to Mr. Amaranth's comment, there is a separate provision that says landscaping shall make up 10% of the area of the project dedicated to commercial or residential uses, so I think there, there may need to be some additional language as to some of these public spaces or, that are specifically going to be within the leased area of the project.
Yes, I'm gonna ask about the landscaping too. So in fact, let's get into, let's get into that. Landscaping on page eight. The, this, this, my first question goes to the corner of Cottington Highway and West Main Road, which is, of course, the premier corner, what we're calling the gateway to Middletown. And at our April 3 meeting, I talked about having a landscaped park-like parcel of, of, I believe I said, 7,500 square feet containing a monument or a sculpture or some special feature identifying this project, as well as presenting an attractive gateway to Middletown. And what you all have agreed to is a landscaped or hardscaped area of 600 feet, which is really very inadequate in my judgment to making this a beautiful entry to the project and to Middletown. So I would ask your, I would ask you to discuss with your clients whether or not, if you can't do 7,500 feet, can you do something closer to it than 600 feet, like 5,000 feet, may I suggest? That's an eighth of an acre. And again, I believe that that area should have some iconic structure, like a windmill or a clock tower or something that makes it special. And I note for you that the, you say this, this space may include a sign reflecting Middletown Center that doesn't exceed five feet in height, but later in the sign section, you proposed putting a hundred-foot, 100-square-foot, 20-foot-tall sign there as well, so you've got an inconsistency, which we'll deal with when we get to signage. All right. Do you want to talk with your clients on that?
Mr. Galvin, before you answer, BJ has a comment.
As the known tree hugger of this group here, and a very active member of the Tree Commission for this town, I would like to just make certain that the Tree Commission is included in any, any organization of areas that are going to provide lovely landscaping for the way that the people of the town are going to enjoy, and I'd like to thank everyone here for being here tonight.
Thank you, BJ. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that will happen. Mr. Galvin.
Yes, I expect certainly when we get to applying... Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Certainly when we, once we file an application, I expect that before it ever reaches you, we'll be meeting with the Tree Commission. Yeah, so, Mr. Hutler, I do think the, the square footage dedicated in that corner can be significantly more than the 600. I don't know that we can go to five, I'm hearing, you know, we're, our engineer isn't here tonight, and I think it would take a little more work to understand exactly, again, the placement and what we can commit to, but I think it can be in the range of 2,000 to 3,000 square feet is what we could commit to tonight, and it could be more than that, but that's the indication I'm getting at the moment.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, let's keep talking about landscaping, and the, the document is confusing in terms of landscaping because of the division of the parcel into the leased and the open space, and landscaping is addressed in many sections, but as I understand it, the developer's intention is that 10% of the leased land will be used for landscaping, and that the 10% will include what we put at the corner of Cottington and West Main, and will also include all of the buffers on the perimeter of the property. Is, let me ask you first, is that understanding correct?
Yes, it will include those elements.
So, so 10% total in your 13.5 acres will be dedicated to landscaping minus however much of that is the perimeter buffers minus the space at the corner, and I would point out that normal mixed-use landscaping requirements for a project of this nature is 25%. So I would want to ask you whether or not, I would surely see if you agreed to 25% versus 10%, subtracting the perimeter buffered areas and the landscaped corner at Cottington and, and West Main, or 10%, not including those, but I think it could take it down to a very bare minimum, similar to Mr. Amaranth's concern earlier, if you say 10% minus these other things.
I understand the comment, and I do think there's, there is room, you know, when, when we draft this, we're drafting it conservatively to be sure that we can proceed and meet the obligation here. I do think that there will be more than 10% provided. Where that number is, we're not totally sure where that is going to land, so I understand your recommendation, but I also point out, because we have kind of ceded to the split of LB and public and drawing that line in the middle of the overlay, that doesn't take away from what has been a main effort of this project from the start, which is to look at this thing holistically and to acknowledge the fact that there is significant open space acreage included in it, and that that would count towards landscaping and open space throughout the project. So I, I don't want to let go of that and totally start splitting these things into two different developments.
Which goes again right back to my very first point. I view, I want to be sure that your clients are not looking to the Middletown public space to meet all of these open space landscaping, community usage requirements. I view that open space that's gonna be there, the five acres, is gonna be an enormous free amenity, basically, for the developer. I want to be sure that we draft this in a way that the developer is not looking to that open space to meet all of the requirements, and that we're gonna have ample landscaping and community spaces and gathering spaces and the like, and a Town Commons character in the leased space.
Well, I think there's a decision. I mean, two months ago, there was a, a big push to really clearly articulate and preserve 1.5 acres for open space for the town on the north section, and we've now worked towards doing that and very clearly segregating those uses. This could be a different project if you wanted to push that 1.5 acres in and have, you know, lots of fountains and green space interspersed throughout the leased area. We could do that, but we've spent a lot of time now focusing on how to preserve contiguous open space for you, for the town, for the people here. There's give and take there, and so if, if, if you want, if you want it to look differently, maybe we can do that, maybe the, the leased space goes all the way out and all the open space is worked in. That's not the project the way it has been envisioned to date, and so, you know, there's, there's tension there, I understand it, but it has always been the case that this parcel's looked at globally, and the benefit of having a lot of open space, whether it's on one section or interspersed throughout, is gonna be part of this project. So we can't ignore that open space. I, I understand the point you've been hitting now, that you want more throughout, but we also have preserved this portion at the north end as well, so...
Okay, so, so I promise I don't have too many more points, but my next one is very important. And I've gone back to the comp plan and to the request for information that went out June 2nd, 2021, and it says there are development goals and potential uses and three development goals, vibrant town community center, mixed-use development, and affordable and workforce housing. And I understand the affordable housing is an economic challenge, and that's why it's limited to 12%, but I see this project as being very much appropriate for workforce housing, where affordable housing is defined as 80% or under of the area median income and, of the town's median income, and workforce housing is 80 to 120%. And I believe that we should also provide, just like we provided, 12% of the project will be affordable. I think we should provide for a substantial portion of the project to be workforce housing, i.e. that 80 to 120% of the median. And because I suspect it's gonna be designed to meet that anyway, I don't actually anticipate that will be a huge problem for your client. I could be wrong, but I think it's designed for teachers and police officers and firemen and people like that.
Well, we understand if that's the recommendation you're going to make to the council, but that, that's not something that we can commit to. If, if that is what the target, if that is what the target demographic ends up being, that's wonderful, but the residential element of this shocked me at the last meeting by moving from 10% to 12% affordable, and the, you know, the finances just don't work with those kinds of limitations.
Steve, you might...
Go ahead.
So, just to, just to further clarify that, what is the intended use of the other 132 units as far as lease terms, and is it gonna be 12-month leases, like required?
12-month, 12, six to 12-month leases, I think. Mostly 12-month leases. Market rate.
So market, market rate, six to 12-month leases minimum?
Yes, no short-term rentals.
That's kinda, there's been a lot of discussion in town, there's already ordinances in place for that?
We, we understand that.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to page 10. On design standards, just a couple of clarifications. A1 says we're gonna have a variety of building styles with traditional New England architecture and aesthetics. My question is, assuming that there is a hotel... My question is, assuming that there is a hotel, and don't assume it, but assuming there is a hotel, would the hotel have traditional... Would the... If there were a hotel, would it be the franchisor's standard, this is what La Quinta Lodge looks like? Or would it be a design that's consistent with what we're doing in the rest of the project?
So, the applicants have been able to achieve moving away from the franchise cookie-cutter model already elsewhere here in Middletown? And that will be the effort to do that with this hotel as well, to bring it into conformance with the obligations we have.
Okay. So then let's say with traditional New England architecture and aesthetics comment, including any hotel.
We've got no hotels.
And then, the point six, very important. Water is very important in our island community. And we talked last time about saying, "To the extent possible, stormwater management shall include low-impact development best management practices," which means like rain gardens and the like. The "to the extent possible," which I thought was agreed to, got changed to "where practical." And I wonder if we can please go back to "to the extent possible."
I'll take it under advisement as we move forward to the next discussion.
Three more comments, and then I'll be done. And again, appreciate your patience. There is some confusion, as this is written, about whether the standard design standards of Section 521 of the Middletown Code apply or are trumped, as it were, by what we put in here. And I would like to make it clear by saying, except as specifically provided, Section 521 Design Standards shall apply. And then there's no ambiguity.
Is there a particular reference that you're pointing to here? Is this at the paragraph at the beginning of Design Standards?
Yeah, and there's several other references throughout. And then like number two, site design shall integrate, blah, blah, blah. And it says there's no specific building design. You took the word "design" out, but that's good.
Well, Mr. Hutler, number four, I think we can even... I think we can strike that altogether. In looking at that, I think that was a little bit confusing, as it was, and we've addressed that, those issues in other areas. But I think what you'll find is throughout, in both sections here, we reference 521 applying, except where they're in conflict with any specific provision in the overlay, in which case this overlay will prevail.
Okay. So then you won't have any problems stating it explicitly. Except as specifically provided, Section 521 Design Standards shall apply.
I think it says it in the opening paragraph.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, I'm up to page 14. And it's the last item on this page. Freestanding signage shall be allowed at the corner of West Main Road and Cottington Highway with a maximum size of 100 square feet and maximum height of 20 feet. Was this inserted by... in error?
This wasn't even recently inserted. This was from... This is original, and no, that's not in error.
Well, it's inconsistent with what we put in for the corner, to have the monument, gateway to Middletown, and a five-foot-tall sign.
Well, the monument to Middletown, I understand, and we can resolve this conflict somehow in having a welcome monument at the corner and a sign. We're going to have to figure that out. And we can talk about the signage, the location of it, the size of it, but in terms of the commercial leased land and what we're going to need for signage, this is what we need.
Well, let me mention that in the limited business zone, signs are allowed up to 32 square feet, 16 feet tall, as opposed to 100 square feet and 20 feet tall. Since this is a limited business zone, I think that the limited business zone requirements should apply.
Well, again, this is why we are drafting an overlay.
And it's the same point on the next page, number four, for the primary ingress egress on West Main Road. Again, you're proposing a sign that would be much larger than other signs in the area. And we're trying to create this very high-quality project. I know your client is known for their high quality, and a great big sign is, in my humble judgment, counter to the idea of a first-class town commons kind of project. So I would urge you to see if you can agree tonight to something considerably smaller for both of those signs. And that completes my list. Thank you.
Other members? Leon.
Let's keep talking about the sign. How many signs are you planning on building? Or what's the idea for signage?
Well, as it sort of states here on 1415, there are three sort of exterior signs or on the perimeter of the property, two. One on West Main at the main entrance, one on the corner, and there'll be one, smaller one, on the Cottington side at the entrance there. So those are... And that ties in to a response to Mr. Hutler, which I referenced at the outset, which is if you go stand at this property now and look across the street, there are 20 signs, poles, with multiple signs on each one, all disparate in design, height, quality. And we're looking to, in the same amount of space that we're talking about here, essentially have two visible signs, one at the main entrance, one at the corner, and then if you're in Cottington, one more. Our belief is, while yes, that might be larger than what LB allows, it is a streamlined, uniform way of dealing with a very large development with a lot of retail in it and some other big uses. And it's a very... We actually think it's low intensity. I know those signs are big, but on that stretch of land, it'll be basically two signs visible. So we think it's a fair approach to the signage on such a large development, to have a slightly larger sign to identify the tenants and businesses in that complex, so you don't have something that looks like the other side of West Main Road with a development there.
Is there a... Do you have an idea of how many businesses are going to be envisioned inside this development? Individual businesses, not yet?
Not sure. There's, you know, we've reduced probably the available square footage based on some of the concessions made, but we're in the 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. How that gets parceled out, we don't know yet.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I think I can envision the sign you're envisioning, and it reminds me of signs that... And correct me if I'm wrong, if you drive into Warwick and those industrial, you know, developed areas, is that the type of sign that you are envisioning? The large signs with multiple, you know...
Well, you know, I don't even have a vision of the architecture of the sign yet.
Sure. Sure. Is there any way we can resolve this tonight by requiring any sign designed to go through the planning board?
Well, it will. I mean, there's going to be a signage plan that is going to be a part of the master plan development. All of this, again, you know, we're getting into questions about what the application actually is going to look like. The application's going to include plans for all of these things: landscaping, signage, lighting.
Of course. But with all due respect, what we are doing now is codifying what you will be allowed to do by right.
Right.
So, so once this is...
No, but...
Right. So, I mean, under your logic, Mr. Galvin, you can say, "I want a 500-square-foot sign." And, you know, you come to us, you know, in your master plan, and you propose a 500-square-foot sign, and all we can talk about is design, not size, because it would be allowed by right in this overlay. So we're trying to, you know, obviously, there's a... This is a document that will guide the development.
Yes.
And there will be... There's things in here that you're allowed to do by right. There's things in here that you're allowed to do by special use.
Right.
And, you know, I think that's where we're going with all of this. We want to make sure that what we approve tonight is consistent with the vision in the comprehensive plan. And again, with all due respect, whether the project is viable to your clients or not is not really our concern. It's not. That is not our concern. I think you know that. And I think... I'm sorry. We have been told there is a very limited scope in our decision-making tonight, and I don't think part of that scope is the viability financially of this project. Unless it is. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think you're right. I think you're making recommendations about consistency with the comp plan, and I'm receiving those. And we will do what we can as we have done after... Before we had our first meeting, after we had our first meeting, and after we've had our second meeting. Ultimately, I think the viability of the project is a concern of the council.
Of course.
Because the council wants this. And we're going to be having all of those, these discussions again with them. So I do respect the line you're drawing, and I understand that you may have recommendations that may not allow for project viability. And I understand that. So I'm, again, I'm doing my best to respond positively to the things I can. I have to hold my ground on things that I cannot concede on, and, you know, hopefully we can still end up with a meaningful and successful project.
Thank you.
Other comments? Joe?
Yeah, no, Mr. Galvin, I had a question. I know Mr. Hutler brought up the point on the signage that's allowed in limited business. You guys have asked for 20 feet with 100 square feet of signage, and you referenced 16 feet.
And 32 square feet.
Height and 32 feet. Is there some middle ground that can be achieved here? 16 to 20, you know, is not that significant.
Yeah, I think on the height, probably my concern would just be...
Yeah, right.
On some of the square footage for ensuring there's space for the tenants and having it visible on, again, we're looking for two signs on a stretch that is a very significant stretch of real estate on West Main Road with 20 or 30 other signs across the street.
So I'd like to see if we can get to a point where there's agreement on that. And then, you know, all the discussion, sitting here quietly, listening very intensely, Steve, to your discussion on the open space, the public parcel versus the leased land area. My impression is that there is significant open space requirements that will be on the leased land area now, whether it's 600 feet, 5,000 feet, 7,500 feet. My impression is there will be... It's not all going to just be condensed onto the public space. And that's from review and reading these documents, so I appreciate you bringing that up. But I fully expect that there will be a lot of open space on the leased parcel.
Right. And my only issue I was addressing with Mr. Galvin was, as drafted, it doesn't say that. So we're trying to be clear.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Steve on this. I think my impression from the last meeting was that there would be one and a half acres of contiguous open space, which you've done in this update, at the north end of the project. I'm not even looking at that as part of this development anymore. That is Middletown space. And the other 13 and a half acres is what I'm considering this overlay to apply to. There is... I mean, I think that was my understanding, that 10% of that 13 and a half acres of leased land was going to be reserved for open space landscaping and, you know, to make sure it's not just, you know, all pavement. So that was my understanding after last meeting. I'm a little surprised that that's not codified in this update.
Okay. So, I'll rest on my prior comments to Mr. Hutler there. We can do the 10%. The debate about taking out the landscaping from that 10%, I'm just going to reserve on it. I think we can achieve it. We are going to look at it again. I just want to be careful without Molly here to commit to that, but I think that is something that, you know, we'll be able to achieve within the leased area.
BJ.
I think you know where I'm coming from. The, of course, it's the landscaping, and it's wanting this group to have something to do with the... And it sounds simple, but it's not. The Tree Commission. There are a number of very professional auboris, and we have a town tree warden who is on it also. We are... And I do know that the new school group has gone to the Tree Commission and listened to the variety of things to make Middletown schools better. And I assume that this is what we want, too. We want this to be better. And I must say, having come from a family of people who are very interested in agriculture, things like this, that I am very much interested in seeing what happens. So, thank you for being supportive, and I'm certain that this is important to all of us.
Thank you, BJ. Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Galvin, in parts of the overlay, I just wanted to get some clarification. I see some things in here, and I'm not sure what the intention was, you know, but maybe it's just you explaining it to me. So, under procedure on page three, you know, you talk about small-scale projects independently developed in accordance with an approved mixed-use project master plan. What was the intention there?
Mr. Fenton, is this in revised language, or is this in the... I'm trying to... Let's see here.
Under procedure, Part A.
On page three?
Yes.
Got it. So, you know, part of our task here is, we're drafting something, again, for not just this project, but to be... If this passes, this will be the new zoning for this lot, whether or not this project proceeds or not. So this was drafted to cover scenarios beyond just this project in case this were to fall through. But this is meant for, specifically, the intention here is going to be to... The intention here is going to be to file a master plan, a major land development master plan application, with the entirety of the project before you, at that master plan conceptual level. If that is approved, the different segments of the project will be pursuing their separate elements of the development: the hotel, the residential, the retail. And so, it could be that you may come... One of the developments may achieve what they need to for a preliminary plan application before another. So this is just meant to sort of allow for one element of this broader project to come back before you for preliminary plan approval and to move forward without necessarily being the full global project all proceeding at one time.
Well, okay, I got another question. Okay, so, under professional services, five, I guess it's the one, two, three, the fifth bullet down, office customary home occupation for use by resident of the premises up to one employee or associate. Are we talking about an office in the residential buildings? Personal offices in the residential buildings?
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting one. I think we could probably have meant... Let's see, this is in professional services. That is for the use in the hotel, in the apartments? Yeah, yeah, that could be just moved to the accessory use, I think, as a home occupation. But yes, it would be for the apartment.
So, in these six-month, 12-month leases, that somebody can come in and set up a business there and...
No, no, no. Well, not a primary business, but if you're an attorney, or an architect, or... And you have a home office, it allows for that.
Okay, let me see. The whole issue of drive-through, you know, restaurants and banks and so forth like that, now, you're asking for that by right, but even if this is allowed, you know, it won't depend on a traffic study?
Yes. I think, you know, a traffic study is absolutely going to be part of the presentation when there's an application before you.
So, because of the traffic situation in the development and outside the development, it might not be allowed at all, right?
Well, certainly, we, you know, we expect to be able to make it work safely, and we expect that's what we're going to be able to present to you.
Okay. Let's see, I've got one more, I think. Under density and dimensional standards on page 10, there is no limit to the number of buildings located on any single parcel or parcels within the overlay district. Why is that... I don't even know if that sentence makes any sense.
Exactly. Just, let's see, no limit. What number are you on?
That's on page 10. It's number five at the top.
Oh, I see. So, you know, the overlay is meant to be looked at sort of without the... Without looking at the underlying lot lines. So, you know, there could be, on what exists currently for the lot lines, there could be, you know, part of the hotel, or the apartment, or there could be retail on the same lot as the underlying lot as the apartment. That's what that is meant to address. The overlay allows for this full development on all of these parcels without regard to those lot lines.
If you need to read that in connection with the previous section, Section 4, which says that the land area will be treated in aggregate in determining density. So that there are density regulations, but they're not on a per-lot basis, it's on the aggregate of the entire project.
Right.
Is there any way of referencing back to that particular thing?
It's in the previous section on the bottom of page nine.
Okay. Hold on a second.
Okay, bear with me, I have a few comments. Although most of what I had has already been addressed. First, I want to express my appreciation for the team being willing to work with the town. Much appreciated. Just give me a minute as I work through this. Some of, like I said, some of these have already been covered. Under your allowed uses, you have hotel and motel by right, and I have a concern about that. Here is my concern. Suppose five or 10 years from now, we find, or you find, that the residential purpose of the development isn't working right, or the retail is. If this is given by right, you could come in and put a second hotel in, and the town has no say about it. You could even, at some point, decide to sell your interest, and we could end up with a developer who is not so willing to work with the town. So on this hotel-motel issue, I would like to either retain special permit or put a limit to one hotel.
I think one is fine, Chairman Croce, and, you know, just an additional backstop on that is that there are separate leases that will also be in place for these properties that will have limitations on the distinct uses. So the residential lease is a 99-year ground lease for that purpose.
Okay.
Understood.
So, you would prefer to put a single hotel rather than special permit, which is fine You've already addressed the small-scale shopping center, lunchrooms and restaurants with alcoholic beverages. LB has that as a special permit. I would like to retain that as a special permit.
I understand your preference. You know, restaurants that have, that serve alcohol, I think are going to be... Need to be part of the plan.
I understand, but special permit allows it.
No, well, I understand. It allows it after...
Special permit.
Right, no, and so, our request is for that to be by right.
I, well, I'm suggesting it would be better to leave it as special permit, and that's what I would support at this point.
Understood.
A lot of my points have already been covered, so bear with me. Let me ask the town solicitor whether what I'm going to say is necessary. Under the prohibited uses, under that list of bullets, would it... Is it appropriate to add another bullet that says other uses not specifically listed but prohibited in limited business?
Along the lines of what we were discussing earlier with regard to Section 602 and putting some clarifying language, and I think having a provision that clarifies that, once again, I don't think it changes the substance of what's in here, but it just makes it clear, so there's nothing to argue about down the road, so...
So you're suggesting it's good to add that bullet?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. My next point is on page nine. Under Paragraph 3, the fourth bullet, "For every 10 feet in building height above 45 feet, the setback requirement shall increase by such-and-such." Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, the allowable height in LB is 35 feet?
That's correct.
So I think this bullet should be referenced to 35 feet, which is the allowable height in LB. Now, having said that, I don't have a problem with the 15-foot setback, so what I would suggest is, for every 10 feet in building height above 35 feet, the setback requirement shall increase by 7 and 1/2 feet. For example, a 55-foot building would have a 15-foot setback. So your setback is the same, it's just referencing it to 35 feet. You okay with that?
I think that's okay. Well, I...
They already said yes.
All right.
I had a question on the lighting, and could you explain why, again, you cannot meet town requirements for lighting?
Well, there are just a few, you know, the town... I think the town underlying code on the lighting is four-plus pages, and there are a few elements of it that, when we put this together, we pulled what we felt were the critical pieces to meet the intent of the underlying code: shielding, making sure it faces the right way. In looking back at it, there were a few elements of the underlying code that I just a little... Want to be a little careful about.
So couldn't we just say you're going to meet town requirements and you request a variance if you need it?
Well...
Especially since you said there are only a few things that give you heartburn.
I'm, you know, for tonight, I understand your point, and I understand the recommendation you're going to make. I don't want to commit to that tonight.
Okay, I think we should modify that to say that you would meet town requirements for lighting.
Understood.
For the signage, I appreciate what Mr. Huttler said and what Mr. Pirek said. Would you agree to a 16-foot height, which is what LB allows?
I think Mr. Pirek was looking for some middle ground.
I understand that. I'm asking if you would agree to 16 feet.
No, we proposed 20 feet.
I know you proposed 20 feet. Would you agree to 16?
No, I'm not authorized to agree to 16 feet at the moment.
Well, I think there's going to be an issue with signage. We'll talk about it when we're discussing it for the vote. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you very much for being patient with me. Any other comments from the planning board? Okay, so, planning board, are you prepared to vote on these questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may suggest a process that may facilitate things in the long run. I think it would be helpful if we took a 20-minute recess. Nobody go anywhere like last time. We do a 20-minute recess where the Mr. Galvin has a chance to meet with his clients, and they can tell us which of these modifications they agreed to. Then, what we can do is vote on the agreement as modified by agreement, subject to the additional things that we would like to see. But the things we agreed to, let's get them out of the way, and they need a little bit of time together to tell us what they can agree to.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion, but let's make it a 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess.
How's Jerome?
What you wouldn't want to be is doing surgery on your brain, not to be sure.
Yes, it does. I really-
Thank you. Okay, while we were in recess, we also decided how we were going to proceed. And what we decided is that the first thing we will do is go through the overlay and determine which of the items that we discussed for change were agreeable to the applicants, and those that are not, we would address as conditions as we go forward. Then we would vote on, once we have that information set, we will vote on questions one, two, and three in that order. Fortunately, Mr. Hutler kept a good list of all of the items that were discussed, and so I will ask him to go through his list. And, planning board members, if you have comments to make on any one of the items, please feel free to comment. Steve?
Thank you, sir. And I wanted to just ask Mr. Galvin, as we go through the list, are there, is it your thought that you will be able tonight to say certain ones are agreed and others are not? Because if they're agreed, then they're just modifications that are being made. If they're not agreed, then they're conditions of our approval.
There are some that I think we had agreed to in our discussion that we can agree to. So we're happy to run through those again with you. And also, we understand that there are some that we cannot and that will be conditions. So-
So we're in agreement then on the process. I'll go through the item-
The alternative is if you want to make all of those items conditions, you know, that's another way to do it, and you can start talking about the merits of the issues.
I think it would be helpful to go the first route.
Okay.
Get them out of the way if you're in agreement.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we provide a recommendation, a favorable recommendation to the Middletown Town Council with respect to the proposed Middletown Center zoning overlay.
Steve?
Yes?
I thought we would discuss them first before making motions.
I'm going to say, "Subject to."
Let's go through them first.
Okay, all right, we'll just do the list. Okay, here we go. Page two, the added language in D. That including but unlimited creation of family and pedestrian-friendly spaces and community usage within both the leased land, capital L, capital L, defined below, as well as the open space parcel defined below.
Yes, we can agree to that.
Thank you. Page three. Under permitted uses A, we are deleting the second sentence after the word "below." Permitted uses are those listed below. We're deleting the rest of that sentence up through within a public zoning district.
I'm sorry, can you point me to the page again?
Page three, permitted uses under A.
Got it.
So it will say, "A mixture of land uses is required. Permitted uses are those listed below." Period. "The provisions of this section shall take precedence over those of other subchapters." Dot, dot, dot.
We're taking the blue line out.
We're taking the blue line out, and we're taking the "and specified as permitted uses" in 602 of this chapter.
Well, is this one that I think we needed a little further discussion with the solicitor on, because it does reference only the Middletown Center overlay district?
Yeah, but we went through it at some length, and we agreed it's clear to take it out.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can take that language out. There is going to be a column that will go into section 602 that will conform to everything that is going to be listed in the narrative of the ordinance. So I think we understand, I think we're all on the same page in terms of-
Yeah, I think we are, but I also want to be very careful about what I agree to and what it's going to be pointed to as an agreement tonight versus things that we're agreeing to continue to think through and work towards. And so I just want to be careful about that. I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, and that can be subject to, obviously, your review of the final language.
That's right, that's right.
But this is, this is something that I do not view as a substantive change. This is a clarification.
Understood.
Okay, page four, here is a substantive change. Before the word hotel, under residential, add the words "a single." We know you're not agreeing to that. Or, oh, maybe you are. Yes, maybe you are. Okay, agreed to that, okay. A single hotel motel, okay? Under retail commercial, general merchandise, retailing activities, semicolon, no shop to exceed fifteen thousand square feet.
Yes, we can agree to that.
Thank you. Small-scale shopping center to be deleted.
I think we just wanted to be careful about doing that in terms of the ramifications of that. I want to think through that, so you can make that a condition, please.
Okay, that's our first condition, colleagues. Okay. Lunchroom or restaurant with alcoholic beverages, change the Y to an S, and I know that's a, and, and Mr. Chairman, when we have discussion later, I have a thought on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's under retail commercial on page four, lunchroom or restaurant with alcoholic beverages. It shows as a right use, and the proposal is to make it a special use. Okay. And that's a question mark. We had a similar issue, whether it's a Y or an S for hospital, medical center, or clinic, on page five, under governmental.
Steve, before that, weren't we going to exclude pickleball courts?
That's coming up. It's coming up. We're, we're at, under governmental right now, the last bullet, under governmental.
Court games is the one before that.
Oh, no, there's court games on the very last line of that page. See, I, this is indoor, where you're looking, Paul. Okay, okay. Yes. Or hospital.
Hospital's quite different than a small, little medical office or facility, so I suppose you're, that makes sense. I would have, I wouldn't think so if it was just a medical office or a walk-in clinic or something, but I'd have to agree with you on a hospital.
Okay, and that's a question mark, or is that a no?
Well, it's a Y because that's how the uses are listed in the code.
Okay.
That was a separately identified use. I mean, we're obviously not looking to build a hospital, but this is how the uses are laid out. The walk-in clinics are more along the lines of what we're thinking, PT, you know, those types of things that might fall under that. Those are things we would like to be allowed by right.
Let me suggest, I think, medical, the office is covered elsewhere. Why don't we just delete hospital?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Just delete hospital. Joe?
Now, my recommendation was going to be hospital under special use permit. Medical and/or clinic would be allowed by right.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Sorry, just in the, I'm sorry, one second. In the use table, in limited business, hospital, medical center, or clinic is a special permit. Next line down in the use table, emergency counseling service or drop-in center, special use. So those are special uses in the limited business use table.
I understand. We're looking for them to be by right.
Okay.
And it sounds to me like the proposal is hospital is an S and medical center or clinic is a Y.
Correct.
So, just a point on that, Steve. I'm not sure how this works in the use table, but would we break those out? Because those are now two different-
Yes.
-items. So that would be a change to the use tables. Okay.
Yes. Okay, now, under accessory uses, we were deleting the second bullet entirely. Co-locating cellular and the eight, but one, that's coming out completely. And the next bullet is going to change the word "more" to "less," and it's going to change the word "visible" to "shielded," and change the S to a Y. So it will say, "Co-locating cellular and other antenna six feet in height or less on top of structures and shielded from a public right-of-way," and that's a Y.
Yes.
Next bullet, after court games, we're going to add the parenthetical, "Excluding pickleball courts."
Correct.
I'm sorry, just- I'm sorry, just, I want to weigh in on this. Is there another way to exclude pickleball without saying in our ordinance excluding We can do that, that's fine. I'm okay with that.
Excluding games that are very loud and drive neighbors crazy?
What's the next game that's going to be, be loud? That's my question.
All right, top of page six, we're going to strike through drive-through service of restaurants and retail, comma, including banks. It's not going to be permitted at all, and I know that you don't agree with that.
Correct.
Okay, and.
I didn't, I didn't agree with that either. I, I think that certainly limiting drive-throughs to just a bank would make sense. I don't know that I've seen too many banks without a drive-through, but I understand where you're, where you're coming from.
What's the sense of the board on that one? How do you feel? Joe?
I think there's, I agree with Charlie in terms of a bank. I, I don't, I think it would be reasonable for the applicant to consider a limit on how many drive-throughs they could have.
Please, please, please.
But I think, again, I'm.
Okay, BJ? Do you have any, Mike?
Well, I see, you know, for the town center concept, I don't think the, the drive-throughs are compatible, but, you know, I understand that, you know, I don't think the, the retail spaces are viable without them, you know, so I'm a little torn in a sense, you know? Maybe I prefer special use permit on them, and, you know, they definitely have to, you know, undergo some sort of a, a traffic study to make sure that they can be, that they can work.
Okay. BJ?
I don't know how many of us know that there are banks without either a drive-through or a place to drive and then walk to the bank. So I'm really torn by that because I think that if you count the number of banks that we already have in town, I think everyone has an opinion on this, which I will not say because I know that we all know how many we have. So I am, I'm torn, I'm torn between the fact that we have had drive-through banks that we've okayed, but then again, are you going to have people walk to the bank, park their car someplace or whatever? So I'm in a quandary, I guess.
Could I offer, you know, we.
Let's, let, please, quiet, thank you, go ahead.
Member Pyrick mentioned a limitation, and we would, we'd be looking for, we'd accept a limitation of two in the 12-plus acres that, you know, were, would be the least area that we're developing. We think over that amount of space, that's not an unreasonable request, and we could perhaps find an agreement on that item if the board was willing to consider two drive-throughs on the least area.
Could we ask you people to be quiet? People in the back, could you please quiet down? If you want to speak, go outside, please. Thank you. Charlie, you already expressed your view. Leon?
I'm kind of torn here, too. I think, I know we're not supposed to talk about the actual concept, but if the concept were to be a bank kind of away from the residential area, I think it could make sense there. I don't have any heartburn over that. I think the concern is that the, the drive-through will become a safety issue in a residential-type walking area. I do also think that if, when we get to master plan stage, there will be traffic studies that maybe address those, too. So I'm on the fence with it. Again, I think it does make sense for a bank away from the residential area, but maybe not in a, you know, close or in close proximity to a residential-type area.
What I'd like to suggest is, first of all, I like the limit of two, but why don't we put this down as a special permit so that we can evaluate the safety of the drive-through situation? I, I can envision, you know, a situation where it's done properly and it's not a problem for pedestrians. On the other hand, I could envision the other extreme. So let's put this down as a special permit.
We can agree to that, and so we understand this will be.
It's going to be a condition anyway, so.
That's right.
So let's put it down as a special permit, but as a condition.
Could we, could we put it in as a special permit for anything other than the bank use?
That makes sense to me.
Is that, is, would that be okay with the board?
Well, I, I still think it's good to have a review of the traffic pattern that is created by the drive-through because we have situations in Middletown. We have situations in Middletown where the drive-through was approved but has proven to be not very good. So I think it, it might be worth having a special review.
If I could just speak to that.
Sure.
Because I think even if it's by right, the use is by right, there is still a vehicle through which you're going to be reviewing that through the technical review committee, development plan review, where you'll be looking at all of the technical specs and the safety and, you know, the, the professionals who will review that will be able to provide the answer about whether this is safe or not.
I understand. All of that happened before and we still wound up with a bad situation, so, anyway, I will go with the sense of the board.
The sense that I read is that we would allow the bank drive-through as of right, but any other drive-throughs would require special use.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, me too.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll put down condition.
And, and so, Mr. Galvin, we take out in this bullet, including banks, and take out the Y and put an S because you're covered on the top of page five that specifically has a Y for bank or financial institution with drive-up window. Right?
Yes, and, you know, just to be, just to cover it, and I don't, I of course can't explain why there's a slight discrepancy in the description, but drive-through window versus drive-through service, just want to cover that. I think we're, you know, we understand the point. That would be by right.
Okay, we'll change the word service to window. Bottom of page six, before C, add a bullet that says other use, not specifically listed, but prohibited in the limited business zone.
I think, I think we're okay with that.
The proposal is to redraft the first part of paragraph one under mix of land uses, starting with a public common area shall be provided up to the word, meet any open space requirements in the code in the middle of that paragraph, redraft it to provide that the leased land shall contain public, community, open space, and landscaped areas up to a minimum of 10% of the land area within such space, and that such 10% shall be exclusive of any landscaped perimeter buffers or any of the land within the Cottington Road, West Main Road corner landscaped area.
I'm going to ask that you make that a condition so that we can.
Yeah.
Further review that. I, I, it may be achievable and that we can agree to it. I just need more, we just need to look at that more deeply.
Okay. The proposal will be to delete the sentence that starts with there shall be a landscaped or hardscaped area of at least 600 square feet and replace it with a sentence that says there shall be a landscaped park-like parcel of between 3,000 and 5,000 square feet at the corner of Cottington and West Main Road, which will contain a monument, sculpture, or similar feature, which will be the most prominent aspect of the corner and which shall serve as the principal gateway identification for the project as well as presenting an attractive gateway to Middletown.
I think we should go with that being a condition, if that's what you're thinking.
I gave you your 3,000 feet.
There's a lot of other language there at the end.
Okay.
But we'll keep, we'll keep looking at it and working on it.
Okay. Okay. In paragraph two on page eight, the second sentence, a minimum of, I'm going to say one little i, the 12% of total residential units shall be restricted to residential, that means the state or Rhode Island's definition of affordable housing at 80% of area median, and then add, and two little i, a minimum of 38% of total residential units shall be restricted to residential, that means the state or Rhode Island's definition of workforce housing at between 80 and 120% of arion, area median income.
Well, we don't agree to that.
Put it down as a C.
And we will add.
Could I just ask Mr. Hutler? I, I'd just like to ask, because we had this discussion where there was a question from the board, is, is the board unanimous on that point that they want to make 38% of the residential?
We'll get a sense of the board. Joe? No? BJ? Mike?
Yes.
I'm not in favor.
No?
I'm, I'm not in favor of that condition because, because, and I'm, this might be unpopular, but I, I don't believe you're getting any state or federal aid to build housing. So I do understand the cost of building housing, and while I do believe that the rents will fall within that designated range, I, I think it's, I think it's asking too much from any developer to tie their hands with development if they're not getting any subsidies to build it. So that's why, that's why I wouldn't, just from a logical standpoint, if they were getting subsidized and it was a requirement by accepting that subsidy, then yes, but, so I would not agree with that.
I, I just bring it up because there are some that we are agreeing to, there are some that we can ask to be conditions that we're going to look more at, there are some that we know we, we can't do and we're going to have to fight against very hard to, to proceed. So I wanted to get a sense of the board where they were on that one, that's why I asked.
My sense is that I think Mr. Amarette raised a good point, and I will oppose it also. So I think we remove that, we remove that.
Okay.
Thank you.
At the end of paragraph two, we add a sentence that says no unit shall be leased for less than a six-to-12-month term, and short-term rentals shall not be permitted.
Chris, you okay? Okay, yeah, we're, we're okay with that.
Page nine. We change in paragraph three for setbacks, the fourth bullet, for every 10 feet in building height above, change 45 to 35, and change five feet to 7.5.
I'm, I'd like to ask for that to be a condition only because I'm not very good at math.
The math, the math is right.
That's fine.
You still.
I'm sure the math is fine, but I, and we'll probably be able to agree to that. I just want to be able to think it through.
You still get the 15-foot setback.
I'm sure it's going to be fine, but I just want to reserve.
I actually think it's wrong. I think it should be 2.5 feet, not 7.5.
Yeah, that was my concern, but, but again, I don't know, and so that's why I want to.
For every 10 feet above 45.
Above 35.
Above 35, so that's.
Twenty.
Twenty feet, that's two sections. To get 15 feet, 7.5.
No.
No, this is, the setback shall increase by, you're increasing the setback, so you're increasing.
You're already at 10.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we change it?
Yes, change it to 2.5.
Or alternatively, we could just leave the reference here and.
We'll change the wording.
I think it accomplishes your objective, Chairman Croce, if you change five to 2.5.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, and I'm confident with the math there, too, Mr. Galvin.
We'll review it.
Page 10, under Design Standards A1, we're going to add the word, after that word, after New England Architecture and Aesthetics, comma, including any hotel.
Yes.
Since there's only one, we can say including the hotel.
We're deleting four under A.
Yep.
And in six, we're changing the word where practical to to the extent practical.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry, to the extent possible, excuse me.
Well, no, so you can make that a condition.
So can I weigh in on that one?
Yes.
What is the difference between where practical and to the extent possible?
It's a significant difference. Practical means if there's a way that they can readily or easily do it, they do it, but if it's to the extent possible, they have to. But if it's to the extent possible, they have to really try to make it work. It's a higher standard.
Okay.
And I, I would even say it's even more onerous, to the extent possible. I mean, there are a lot of things that are possible and that can be engineered at incredible, unreasonable expense and-
Would you accept to the extent reasonably possible?
Well, or, or we could say practical, you know. I understand we're having a little-
Okay, it's a condition then.
It's a condition.
To the extent-
Sure.
Possible.
But I, but I like the insertion of reasonably. I think it's good to-
I don't like that, I just, I think that's too ambiguous. And too subj-, it's too subjective.
Make it reasonable.
I, I will defer to Steve on that.
The best protection for the town is if it says to the extent possible.
Let it go at that.
Okay. Mr. Galvin, then we, I believe we agreed to say, except as specifically provided, section 521 Design Standards shall apply.
Well, again, I, I think, I think we say that in the, the prelude to Design Standards. So why don't we make that a condition and we'll decide on the right language.
Okay.
Where was that item again?
That was, it would be a new, under Site Design A, we'd add it as number seven. I, I think Mr. Galvin may be right that the preamble may cover it and so it may be okay.
I, I do believe the preamble covers that point.
So let's eliminate it.
Okay.
Just see eliminated.
Drop that, drop it. Okay. Page 12, let me just note that, as I indicated, landscaping is covered in many sections here, but the concept is the leased space, the 13 acres that the developer is building on, not the Middletown open space, will have at least 10% open landscape community space and that the corner landscaped area and the perimeter buffers will be in addition to the 10%, is the concept.
So again, I, I think we aspire to that, but I'd like you to make it a condition while we review it further.
Okay, page 13. Or I beg your pardon, page 14.
On page 13?
I was going to add it at the very end of E.
Oh, okay.
Which is pause on page 14 to say, and I understand, Mr. Galvin, this is going to be a condition because you, you have to evaluate it. But all lighting shall comply with minimum town standards contained within the ordinance.
I would suggest just simply a reference that the lighting will comply with the town's lighting ordinance, if that's the-
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
And then, and then you can-
It would essentially replace this.
But then you, you can remove all that, that, that additional language under lighting and just replace it with that.
Oh, the whole thing under lighting?
Yes, because the lighting ordinance covers all of those
Okay.
issues.
Okay.
So there's no need to repeat them.
Mr. Chairman, are you okay with that since it was a good point?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, signage, page 14.
Was that agreed to?
It, I'm hopeful it's one of the conditions that we will agree to, but I need to review that.
You want it as a condition?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Page 14 on signage, number three. The proposal is to delete the 100-foot, 20-foot-high sign at the corner parcel where there is the monument and the specific smaller sign. And on four, next page 15, to say that its maximum size at this location is 32 square feet and 16 feet high.
Well, we, we don't agree to that. And, you know, to the extent we want to discuss it more, we can, I mean, there are, but I don't know that it's going to be useful right now.
I think you had an opening.
Well, you know, we, we're probably going to have 10 to 15 businesses on this parcel. They would all have a certain amount of rights to signage, even if you divided them up on the, the lots that underlie here. You'd be talking about far more signage square footage than what we're talking about consolidating into two signs. So I, I just ask that you think through the idea of, I know there, I know these two signs would be larger than what would be allowed on a lot in an LB district. But you're getting a lot of free air, free space that's not littered with a lot of other signs by virtue of consolidating them into these two. So I just wanted to make that last comment on the signage.
All right, this is the last point.
Discussion.
See, I, I, I'm more concerned about the height, I'd rather limit this, limit the height to the 16 feet that LB allows and let the town council deal with the area.
I would note for my colleagues that in the general business zone, 60 square feet is allowed.
Let's propose 60 square feet and the town council can still deal with it.
And, and a height, a height limit of 16, is that-
A height of 16, yeah.
No, it's a height of 20 feet in general business.
No, but let's stick to the 16 feet in limited business.
Okay, our proposal, Mr. Galvin, 60 square feet, 16 feet tall.
We, you'll need to make that a, oh, sorry.
If the, if the conditions in the general, general business are 20 feet
Yes.
and 60 square feet.
Yes.
I'd be comfortable with that standard. And then if it needs to be bigger, then you'd have an opportunity to ask for a variance on that in the master plan stage. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm not, you can be a condition that you want to review, but that's what I would be comfortable with, just to keep it as a general business. Keep it in line with the general business because this is a bigger development.
I'd rather keep-
And I understand that concern.
Keep it in line with limited business, which is what they're going to get.
I understand.
And make the exception on the area. Leave the height at 16 and give them 60 square feet.
Of area.
It's limited business.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big parcel, it's a single sign.
Joe.
Practically speaking, given the size of the development and the anticipated tenants that are going to occupy the development, having 32 square feet, even 60 square feet, the tenant panels will be about the size of this.
Right.
So it's, to fabricate the sign of 16 feet materials to have it look appropriate for a Middletown Town Center gateway project into, is going to be very expensive. To put tenant sign panels on there that are as big as this are going to be a complete waste of the developer's money. And so, I'm just saying. Well, I, by, by putting guardrails up on the, on the sign square footage, I think people should understand that it, it's, it's going to have no impact for the retailers. And the retailers are, everyone wants a project to be successful, the retailers will suffer not having any signage, you know. Might as well just have it, you know, go forward with the dog park. But I'm just saying that in the, in the, in the, in the consideration for how many square feet, if you haven't done a retail pylon sign recently, that's the real-world effect of, of limiting how many square feet. The panels are going to be tiny. And if that's what we want, great. I just, I'm bringing up as a, as a point for everyone to understand, that's it. I'm not saying go with 100, go with, I'm just saying that's the effect you're going to get. Tiny, tiny panels, that's it.
Mr. Chair, if I could add on to something Mr. Pyrrhic was saying, there, there's a safety element as well in terms of these being visible from the roadway with the people driving, it has a traffic impact, calming impact for those things to be visible to the drivers coming up and down West Main Road and Cottington, to be able to see the signs, looking for the, the retail that they're looking for easily without looking for minuscule signage. So that is an element of why the signs are proposed to be what they are.
I appreciate Joe's comment. I point out, let me ask the board this, would you be comfortable with 100 square feet with a maximum height of 16 feet?
Yes.
I think that's a reasonable-
Let's go with that.
And is that just to clarify-
100, 100 square feet is 10 by 10.
That's right.
It's not that big.
That's right.
You are good at math.
But really, it's not that large.
Okay, and just, just a point of clarification, is that, that's per sign, correct? That's what we're discussing?
That's per, that's per the two, two signs out front, one out of the main entrance and one on the corner. And then there's a smaller one proposed for on Cottington.
40 square feet.
That's right.
Okay, so the, the each individual, each of the two that you just referenced would be up to 100 square feet? And then the smaller one would be 40 square feet?
Right.
Okay.
No, no, I didn't understand that.
Suggesting that we go with 100 square feet, 16-foot height.
For, for the main-
For the two signs.
For each of the two signs, not in combined, not, not 100 square feet combined between the two.
Each of, each of the two signs.
Each side.
Okay.
Are, are you guys suggesting that there be a 100-foot sign at the corner of West Main and Cottington?
Well, I think that-
We're talking about, that's where our monument is. We're not going to, I don't believe there should be a 100-square-foot commercial sign at that corner. That's our iconic landscaped gateway to Middletown. They proposed a five-foot sign in addition to the monument, and I think that's fine.
Well, I think the, the the corner development, the park-like area should be the prominent, visible feature on the corner, not a sign. So if, if the sign were to dominate that corner feature, then I would not be in favor of that.
So,
Go ahead, Leon.
Okay, so prior to the discussion of the square footage of the sign, I think we proposed to delete the sign on the corner of West Main and Cottington.
Yes.
Right, that was what we just agreed on as a condition. Now we're discussing the square footage of whatever signs are going to be allowed individually.
Well, specifically the one at the main entrance at West Main Road.
So this, so number four would apply to just the sign on-
Just one sign.
At the entrance of, on West Main Road. Okay. And then a number five applies to the sign on Cottington. 40 square feet, if we jump ahead.
Probably, yes.
So I think to accommodate the maybe good meeting point here would be to allow each of those signs to be 100 square feet. And limit it to the two signs, one on Cottington and one on West Main. And then the corner of Cottington and West Main would be the monument, the Middletown monument. So there's no conflicting structure there for that monument.
I, I don't, I don't know, is there secondary site access off of Cottington?
There, there's no concept. I'm assuming there would be.
I, I would stick with what we have said, that the corner at Cottington is the landscaped gateway with a special feature that can be like a sign, but it's not a big commercial sign. And that at the primary ingress egress point off of West Main Road, they get the 100 feet. We didn't talk about the height, or did we say 16 feet?
16 feet.
16 feet. And that all the other conditions laid out here govern. I would point out also to my colleagues in number seven, I didn't raise this point, but there's a proposal that says as of right, each business is allowed two signs. And in a limited business zone, you're only allowed one sign. So this is going to be a very signy, signy project. Does everybody follow my point?
Yeah, I, I think if each business is allowed two signs and there's one sign, one monument sign on West Main and one on Cottington.
Right.
Those are the two signs.
Well, this is saying each retail business gets its own sign, each gets two signs.
I think these are-
Right.
The, the, this one refers to interior signs. Signs that they put on their storefront.
Doesn't say that in seven.
Well, that's what I think it intends.
Well, let's clarify that.
Yeah, you can, that, those refer to the interior.
So number seven refers to storefront, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sinage mounted on the storefront.
Correct.
Correct.
Why would a business need two signs mounted on a storefront?
Well, I think there's a possibility that you're going to have
A corner?
Access on, from both, you know, potentially both sides of the structure.
Oh, you mean?
We're in the weeds now, but
I know.
But I, I, I understand what you're saying, but if, if that situation is not present for that business, then-
How about if we say one sign per exterior wall?
There you go.
Probably fine if we can make it a condition, so we can think it through.
Let's do that, one sign per exterior wall.
Okay, and is, is it the consensus of the board that we are leaving the Cottington corner to its landscaped monument and providing that the freestanding sign at the primary ingress egress access on West Main can be 100 feet
Square feet.
Square feet with a maximum height of 16 feet.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll- Board okay with that?
Well, we're still talking about two, two main signs, are we, not at 100 square feet?
No, no.
One at the West Main entrance and one at the Cottington entrance.
Yeah, two.
Yeah.
What was my feeling, my understanding?
The Cottington is-
The monument.
No, no, that's the corner. There's an entrance on Cottington that's not at the corner.
Is there?
That's the proposal, yes. To be, to, for, to allow for that. Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hutter, I was trying to get some clarification.
No, I, and, and so am I. So you understand what we're talking about at the
Yes.
primary ingress egress? Is there a sign that you would, is the sign that would be at your secondary ingress egress on Cottington, which I suppose is near Lake Erie Street? Would that be the one that's covered by point number five?
I, I believe that's the intention, yes.
So we don't need to do anything, it's covered. And that's, that's, that's the list.
Can you just explain-
Can you just explain what you think is, is being proposed?
Well, what I think.
I'm confused, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Well, so, so my understanding essentially, which is, is that you wish to delete three. Which is the corner sign.
Yes.
Which we cannot agree to and which you can make a condition.
Yes.
You are leaving untouched four.
No, we're changing 20 to 16.
Oh, are you okay with that? All right, we, we'd like, we may be able to agree to the 16, but we'd like for that to be a condition as well.
And those are the only, oh, and in seven, in the second sentence, businesses are allowed a maximum of one sign per exterior wall.
I think that's fine.
And ladies and gentlemen, that's it.
Okay, all right.
I have.
Board member have any other?
I do.
Leon?
Yep. I'd like a condition, I think this is just assumed, but I'd like the condition to be stated. No zoning changes may take effect until the federal deed restrictions on Potsie Field are fully resolved and the parcel. And the parcel is. And the parcel is formally.
It's going to be in the motion.
It's going to be in the motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clarified and Potsie Field is moved to a. In, in order for it to be, to be, for the deed restriction to be lifted, my understanding is it has to be moved somewhere. So that's the condition.
Let's wait till we get to the motion, because.
Sure, I didn't, I have not seen the motion, so.
It's all right.
I think, I think, I can make the motion. I'm sorry, is this not on?
I do have one other.
Yeah, go ahead.
Suggestion, and we can open this up for debate. What I'd like to see is any studies done on traffic or infrastructure be conducted by independent parties. So that. So that it's an independent review of the project and the impact on our infrastructure. I do have a very significant concern, particularly on our sewer system. And development like this very close to. All of that sewage will be going into the treatment plant. And if the treatment plant needs to be upgraded as a result of this, I don't want Middletown taxpayers to be on the hook for that. Now, so an independent review would.
Leon, Leon, my, my understanding is the applicant submits studies on all of those things. And if the planning board or the town council wishes to have an independent review, they can request it. So let's wait until the application comes in.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there is a provision, there is, there is a provision already within the development regulations that provides for an independent review by the town's consulting engineers. Which the planning board has used on large projects in the past. So you already have that option, so it's not necessary to, to put that in this.
Yes.
Here.
Okay.
Any other comments from members of the planning board? Okay, we're ready to vote on these items. So the first item is a recommendation to the town council on a petition of Middletown Commons Town Center LLC. Requesting amendment to the future land use map L4 of the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan. You have the motion, Charlie?
I do. I move to make a positive recommendation to the council to amend the, the future land use plan map L4 of the land use element of the Middletown Comprehensive Plan. To redesignate the subject property from institutional to limited business set, traffic sensitive. This amendment shall become effective, will not come effective until noted restrictions are removed from the associated recreation parcel.
Point of order, we need to exclude the open space parcel from the recommended change in zoning.
It should just apply to the, the development parcel, because the open spaces retain its. Ron, could you clarify that, please?
That's correct, so since the, the developer has agreed to exclude that area, the, the town's public open space area from the request to rezone and also amend the comp plan, and then the motion should also include that stipulation that the change in the comp plan designation does not apply to that 1.5 acres that the town will have control over.
Yeah, it retains. So moved. So may I have that, there's a motion, do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes. Second question has to do with a recommendation to the town council on a petition of Middletown Commons Town Center LLC. Requesting amendment to the Middletown zoning map. Referenced in Town Code Chapter 152. May I have that motion, Charlie?
I move to provide a positive recommendation to the town council to amend the Middletown zoning map to change the zoning designation of subject property from public traffic sensitive to limited traffic sensitive with a portion remaining public. This recommendation is made upon the following findings. The proposed amendment is generally consistent with the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan, including its goals and policy, implementation program, and other applicable elements. And the recommendation is made in recognition and consistent with the purposes of the zoning set forth in Rhode Island General Laws 452430. This amendment shall not become effective until the noted restrictions are removed from the associated recreation parcel.
May I have a second, please?
My second?
Motion is made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes. Question number three, a recommendation to the town council on a petition of Middletown Commons Town Center LLC. Requesting amendment to the zoning ordinance to approve an overlay. May I have the motion, please?
I move to provide a positive recommendation to the town council to amend the Middletown zoning ordinance, Town Code Chapter 152, to establish a new overlay zoning district applicable to the subject property as revised and presented to the planning board. The proposed overlay district is proposed, excuse me, is overlay district is based upon the underlying limited business zoning designation and incorporates applicable provisions of the town's existing regulations regarding mixed, mixed use development along with other relevant zoning ordinance sections. In cases where the provisions of the overlay district conflict with other sections of the zoning ordinance, the overlay district shall prevail. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. The proposed amendment is generally consistent with the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan, including its goals and policies, implementation program, and other applicable elements. And the recommendation is made in recognition and consistent with the purposes of zoning as defined in 452430 of the Rhode Island General Laws. And subject to the following conditions of my fellow board member.
Well, we could, we could say to include the changes that the applicant has agreed to. And to have as conditional other changes that the applicant has not yet agreed to.
And Mr. Chair.
That's fine, yes.
And also the condition that the overlay would not become effective until the underlying restrictions on the recreational parcel.
Yes, 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 good point, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might slightly fiddle with that language to say and such favorable recommendation is subject to the adoption of each of the recommended conditions. Comma failing which the recommendation shall not be favorable.
Say that again.
Okay. Such favorable recommendation is subject to the adoption of each of the subject conditions. And failing such adoption of such conditions, the recommendation is not favorable.
Yeah, okay. I, I think it's worth adding, thank you. Everyone agree that it should be added? Okay, any other comments on this motion?
I have comments.
Did I get a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second. You can't, you made, you're the, you made the motion.
I second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, further discussion, Leon?
I'd like to discuss this, just, I want to, this is our last opportunity to talk on this. I am. The, the council has put us in a very tough and unfair, I think, position as planning, as the planning board. Excuse me, let me finish, please. In my opinion, I don't think we, we, we should be here, I don't think the developers should be here. I think all of this zoning discussion and the changes to the, and applying an overlay and changing the parcel and rezoning it. All of those details should have been ironed out prior to entering into an agreement with any developer. I don't think, and that's, that's not, that's not, that's not a criticism on the developers. They build fantastic, beautiful projects, good-looking buildings, they do a great job. I think it's a, I think it was a, a failure of our town council to enter into this agreement. However, we are, as I spoke earlier, our scope is extremely limited here. We need to take a objective look at the proposal and make a decision on whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've gone through it in detail tonight and over the past couple of months. I think what we've presented is our best shot at, at, at allowing this to move forward if the town council were to adopt it. I'm going to hesitantly vote in favor of this because after I take an objective look at the comprehensive plan, and I've studied this for months now. Overall, what they are proposing is consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you weigh all the evidence, that's, that's kind of how it falls. What I will urge the town council to do while making their decision is give significant weight to public input throughout this process. This, this project appears and, you know, a lot of people have showed up. This is the most attended meetings, meetings that we've ever experienced, or I have ever experienced. So there doesn't seem to be a lot of public support for this project. According to what we've seen.
Is that true?
There, there is support out there, too, there is a lot of support for this project as well.
There's a lot of support.
Yeah, there is, but from what we've heard, it's, it's, you know, it doesn't appear to be. So I just urge the council to really take that into account in their decision-making. And, you know, listen to this, the board and our concerns and hopefully continue negotiating and hopefully get to this project to a point where it is accepted by the public as something very positive. Thank you.
I don't, I'm not trying to contradict you, Leon, but I think there is support for this project. There's actually a lot of different, a lot of different points of view. There are people who would like to see certain things there and to cop. And to compromise on everything is not easy. This board has done, I think, an excellent job in considering all of the possible alternatives and outcomes for this development. We are fortunate to have a team that is willing to work with the town. I think the town council will in fact listen to the public. So when it comes before the town council, by all means, listen. I thank you all for coming, we valued your input, we listened to your input. Please attend the town council meeting and give them your input also. If there are any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand. Yeah, I did get a second, yeah. All those opposed, raise your hand. The motion passes. Thank you all for attending, thank you planning board members for your work. I know this was a lot of work, may I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Motion is adjourned. Thank you also to the planner, the assistant planner, and the solicitor, appreciate it.